Squeeze it twice.
MS Word.
See, you work with these things, you change the building and tolerate the freezing.
A little bit of expansion there.
Well, we got two towns in the whole town.
Copperfield.
Average.
I'm not permitting spending.
Even though like blowout water, water will continue to increase it.
Just to give it start.
Well, so one year, I'm so frustrated. Cut everything.
So now, instead of doing my required, those are the things that we're writing.
I don't know what PEX is, I've never heard that.
Plastic.
Well, PEX is crosswind polymer.
It's not that sweet.
So now, I think.
Well, we're coming.
They're wonderful this way.
Coming right away.
What, right?
Moving.
Channel.
You're trying to come away with a happy meal.
Okay, well, when you do this.
That's a great idea.
Right.
This would look great.
Traditions are a little more on the.
Yeah.
Okay, let's get ourselves started here. We just got after seven o'clock. Thank you all for coming. We have two things on the agenda tonight. To give you an idea of what we're going to go through, I will begin by leading us in a pledge of allegiance. Those who want to join, please stand with us. We will then go through a couple of other things, and I'll lead us through them. So I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you all for joining us, and thank you for showing up and coming out. What we're doing here tonight is we've got a meeting of the zoning board for the village of Webster. We have two things on our agenda. Here's what I will go through. I'm going to go through asking the folks to take a look at the meeting minutes from last time. We're going to look for an approval of that or any comments on changes that we may have. I'll then have a real brief comment before we start on our two things, just about kind of the expectations of both us and the group that's here to comment on things. Basically, what I'm going to say in the end result is, let's everybody be nice, open up your comments, address the board, and we'll be nice coming back at you. That's really where it ends up being. Then we've got those two items. The first one is going to be on behalf of Pride Mark Homes, and that's, I believe, the 250 and State Road on the corner there. And then we're going to have another item where someone is looking to make a new construction down on Kittleberger Park of a new residence there. So having said that, I'm going to move back to the agenda, ask the folks if they've had a chance to read the meeting minutes that we were provided. If you have, do you have any comments on it, or do we want to accept it as is?
I'll make the motion to accept the meetings of August 15th.
Okay, we've got a motion on the table to accept them as written.
Seconded.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None. There we go. Meeting minutes are approved and entered. Thank you all very much. Two items on the agenda tonight. I'm going to read them both for us, and then we'll take the first one. The first one is BME Associates on behalf of Pride Mark Homes, under contract for 44.1 acres on the southeast corner of 250 and State Road. I'm not going to read the tax ID, but the applicant seeks final subdivision plan approval to develop Phase Three of the 44.1 acre area for a total of 28 townhouses or units on seven acres. And for those of you who don't know, these are going to be connected houses. I wouldn't call them apartments because they're going to be purchased on each side, but they're going to be connected. So having said that, the second one is going to be Costage Engineering on behalf of John Antimoso, and I apologize if I mispronounced that, submitting site plans for preliminary review of a two-story duplex with garages, a total of 1,848 square feet on .17 acres. The property will require several approvals. One would be the site plan, side yard setbacks, and a couple of other things here, just to make sure we get through them all. They've told us that the property is located on the south side of Kittleberger Park. It's going to be between 32 and 34, and if that changes at all, if that's going to be something different, they can give us a comment on that when they make the presentation. But I'm going to go back to the BME Associates on behalf of Pride Mark to give a, an idea of what you want to do.
Good evening. Link Sweetrock with BME Associates on behalf of Pride Mark Homes. We're here tonight to request final approval for Section Three of Greenbrier. Section Three, like you said, is the next 28 townhouse units on seven acres. It's the extension of Cedarwood Circle off of Section One near the pond there. Section One is pretty close to complete. Section Two is underway. There's still units under construction out to 250, and we're starting, we're four phases, so this is the third phase, to extend Cedarwood Circle, and then the fourth phase would complete that circle along the bottom. So this is completely consistent with preliminary subdivision and site plan approval that you approved back in 2021. For the overall preliminary subdivision and site plan approvals, we did SEAKER then. This is consistent with everything we've done. We're just phasing the construction of the project, consistent with what we've been shown all along. Basically, we're just, you know, subdividing these and creating these lots as the market demands and moving through our projects. So like I said, consistent with everything we've done, utilities are all there. They've all been designed, they've been provided, subbed out. Just be extending utilities, doing earthwork. There's quite a bit of grading that needs to be in there that Phil needs to be in for these two phases, sort of like the left for last. These are the lowest couple of phases. But utilities are in, going to be extended. We provided the full sets of plans, and we'll be looking to hopefully proceed with getting the, sort of the site work done this year, this winter, and then being able to start additional work in spring, so additional housing.
Okay, so you've got a total of 28 units are going to come in in Phase Three. Is that correct?
Correct.
Two questions associated with that. Number one, are there any additional ponds in the Phase Three area? And then pile that right on with the SEAKER request. Did we address that in the SEAKER request, the original request, or did the original request approve all three, or, as you mentioned, four phases?
The original approval was for the whole thing. All the stormwater was done. The main pond was installed that provides the stormwater for the whole project, designed sized. There is a pond that's in the back there that's there now, and that's part of, that's where the Section Three will be draining to, but it was all designed and sized as part of the overall.
Okay, so was there any additional SEAKER review process with this third phase?
No.
And our thought process on that being is that they were all included in the previous one?
Right. The overall preliminary and subdivision looked at all of the environmental concerns for the design of the project, so that it's all designed and approved, and that we're just, basically, we're just phasing it to break up the lot, filing the lots and creating the lots.
And that's partially where I was going, was there anything needing in there in this phase? So we've done this before, and you have done this.
Yeah, this is, this is consistent with the design. Overall design, that was approved.
And we did a formal review on this and a formal approval of the initial phase?
The whole thing.
No. This board, you granted preliminary site plan approval for the entire project, all four phases. They did not ask for final subdivision approval on anything except for Phase One back then. And then they, a while ago, they came for final approval of Phase Two, and now they're here for Phase Three. But the SEAKER review was done in conjunction with the preliminary site plan approval of the entire Greenbrier Crossing project.
And that's where I was getting at, yes.
So you don't need to do again, because nothing is different.
Nothing's changed, nothing's.
Nothing is different than what they presented in their preliminary overall site plan approval than what their final approval is asking for.
Perfect. Thank you. Anyone on the board have any questions with these folks or any comments associated with this? Because what they're looking for is final site plan approval for the third phase. And it is just the third phase, correct?
Yes. Final site and subdivision.
Okay.
I assume if you're going into Phase Three, Phase One and Two are probably doing all right.
They're doing pretty good, yeah. If you haven't been out there, I encourage you to go take a look. I think it looks, I think it's a great project. I think it looks really nice, and they're, it's going well. So that's why we're going, we're moving right along to the next phase, so.
Is the community clubhouse done?
It's, it's up. It's under construction. I don't know if it's open yet, but it's there.
It's, yeah, it's not open. It is, it's under construction right now. I think they're in the drywall phase right now. Looks good.
I just have a comment or a question, not beginning to tonight's request, but I've given it through a couple times. It does look good. I was just curious why you went with banking all the mailboxes in that one area? Why don't they have individual?
I think that was at the direction of the post office.
Post office. Okay.
Because they only want to go to, they want to go to one side, yeah.
And I think each phase is going to have their own bank of mailboxes.
It's just how they, how they wanted it done. We didn't, I don't think it was up to us.
I was curious, so, post office. Okay, thank you.
Other, I'm also. Other comments or thoughts?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much. Now, what we'll do is normally, we would open this up to the public, ask anyone who wants to speak for or against this, to give them an opportunity. Many times, that's not done, but thank you. Okay, anyone from the general public, you have any comments for or against this? Just feel free to approach the podium with your name, your address, and your comments. I don't hear or see anyone coming up there, so I'm going to say there is no couple of comments. We'll close that portion of this right now, and I apologize. I stepped down. I said, oh, I did that. So what we're looking for is motions from the board for or against this?
All right, I'll make a motion. Let's see, for final subdivision plan approval to develop Phase Three.
Okay, we have an item on the table to approve the plan for 28 townhouses, Phase Three. Any other comments on it?
Not seconded.
We have a second on the table. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None? Good luck. Have a good one.
Do we need to do site plan two or just subdivision?
Technically, it's both. We need approval for both subdivision approval and site plan approval.
So I wanted to make sure we do so.
But I, so amend the motion to conclude.
Yep.
Subdivision. I just want to make sure I get what I mean.
Okay.
When this, when they originally went through, the village didn't have the site plan local law that we do now, so.
Yeah.
Instead, they went to the village board for.
Okay, why don't we amend our motion and see if we can get that passed, and then we'll have it all on the table.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I guess I made that. Okay, so we're looking to. What isn't even on there, is it?
No, it is.
No, okay.
It's advertised.
For approval of final site plan.
And subdivision.
And the subdivision plan. Okay, we have a motion on the table for a final site plan and. And a subdivision approval?
Not seconded.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None? Now you've done both.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
You'll get the, you'll start the letter of credit and all that that's going to be.
Yeah, once we get all the comments, I guess we'll do.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so what we've got here is the second item getting itself ready. I may ask a question right away as we start, but tell us who you are and what we're going to talk about.
My name is Mike Ritchie from Costage Engineering, representing John Jordan and Massel. They're the developers of the property. Previously, the label is 33 Kittleberger in error, as that would be on the opposite side of the street. It's between 32 and 34 Kittleberger. We're proposing roughly 1,800 square foot, two-unit duplex house per rental.
And.
And it's currently a vacant lot. It's consistent.
You need to speak to for me three, because he just said it wasn't.
Okay. It's consistent with, I guess, the surrounding structures. There's rentals on, I believe, both sides of this. We submitted architecturals, rough cut sheets from the architect, which I have shown here, and it should be a pretty attractive local building. It's two separate units. They're basically the same, copied one side to the other, so it's separate garages, separate entrances, separate driveways. They're completely mixed. They're going to have, you know, complementing architecture. It's not going to be overpowering, but, you know, it should fit well in the neighborhood, but, you know, the intent here is these are going to be, you know, high-quality rentals going for the market rate. We are requesting preliminary final site plan approval as well as a few variances. The first variance is for side setback. The, as Mr. Swingley pointed out, since we are not necessarily budding a residential district but a residential use, we have to comply with the 20-foot side setback, where we are proposing eight foot on either side. The lot itself is 60 feet wide, so if you were to comply with 20-foot side setback, you really would not have an opportunity to build a house. The house we are proposing is, excuse me, sorry. Roughly 44 feet wide, basically 22 for each unit, two-story. The other variance we are requesting, the minimum lot size for the code is 8,000 square feet. The existing lot itself is about 507 square feet short of that, so we're requesting a variance to allow construction of this development on a lot that doesn't meet code. Again, it's pre-existing, non-conforming, not much we can do about that. Again, we are requesting preliminary and final site plan. The disturbance is relatively small. It's just under two-tenths of an acre of a lot, and we're going to be probably half of that, so about a tenth of an acre disturbance. We're proposing a water service, sanitary service, storm service, all connected utilities in the road. And if this board were to approve the variances and grant the site plan approval, the developers would look to get the financing and probably get started on this this fall, not in this spring. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have.
I got a couple. First of all, thank you very much for the actual picture on the other side of that. I didn't have that, and as I looked at it, I was trying to understand, in my mind, it looked like a brick structure that went up on both sides, was square, and you did a nice job of showing us what you're going to do.
Yeah.
So number one, that's good. That's, thank you there for that. Now, you said the lot has 8,000 square feet, or it's looking for 75?
No.
Or it normally would go, and that was where I was kind of trying to understand what you were doing.
Yeah, sorry about that. The current lot, and again, I can do my math, .17 acres, which equals out to, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Well, 43,000 square feet is about an acre.
Yeah, so basically, yeah, just under 7,500 square feet. That's the size of the existing lot as it is today. Code, village code requires that it be 8,000 square foot minimum, but, you know, that was, I think this lot itself is older than the code, so it's kind of grandfathered in. But to be consistent with code, it would request a variance to allow construction on a lot that is roughly 500 square feet short of the minimum required.
So the 8,000 square feet that was in there, and this is a neighborhood district, I believe, it was 8,000 square feet for a two-family house? And that's a question I'm not doing here.
It's 8,000 square feet for all uses in the neighborhood business.
Okay, so the, and so the neighborhood district allows for multiple family dwelling or two-family?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
That was part of what I was trying to get to. And then the other thing that I heard here was, I heard you were going, you have eight feet listed on your plans right now, which is going to be your side yard. It's required to be 20 feet, so you're looking for 12 foot on each side.
Correct. And the lot existing is 60 feet.
60 feet.
So if you were to do 20, really, there wouldn't be an opportunity to build anything on the lot if you complied with code. And again, I think we're, 44 feet wide is fairly narrow, and this is, you know, this specific unit is made, you know, to fit the tight lots, which is why this was selected. You know, most single-family residential houses are 50 to 60 feet wide, so, you know, the nature of the lot as it is kind of restricts what can be done.
And this is on the south side of the street?
Correct.
It's between 33 and 34?
32 and 34, yeah.
32 and 34. What do you want to number it? I'm just curious.
And I believe that would be up to the village.
Yeah, I already got that answer. We got the final declaration from the town. I'm just going to read. It says, please note, Western North LLC is to assign an odd number on the even side of the street. It says, please flag your records accordingly. This was unavoidable, as no even numbers remain, and no even numbers remain, and Monroe County will no longer issue half numbers. So it is officially, for all the records, 33.
And that's fine. I'm just curious, because you've got apartments on the other side of the street, and don't they already have odd numbers?
They're, yeah, they're already established on.
But this is something the town, the county have done this.
Yeah, we're either going to have to have other structured residents over there change their addresses, which is a logistics nightmare.
Right.
Good luck.
So everybody, the town, the fire marshal, myself, we all, the county, all thought it was just a festers, but it's 33. And I'll, and I'll see services that it's on the opposite side, because that's.
Okay, so they're going to give it 33.
There's a rhyme and reason to the way things are turned around, obviously, and so we're just going to do a 33, so.
Okay. That's, that answers that. And so it's two addresses, isn't it?
Yeah, doesn't have to be 33A and B. 33, yeah, 33, yeah, unit A, unit.
Yeah, unit A and B, but that's for, that's for them, not for us, because they label it A and B. We're just going to put it as 33.
Okay.
Because these are rental, not for sale.
These, yeah.
So they're basically, you know.
Looks like they would with, you know, a house that's subdivided.
I get it. Final question I had was the back. As I understand this from the pictures, you're going to be on the entrance ramp onto 104. You're going to be budding up against the back of that. All right, that looks pretty full of trees and bushes and things right now.
So there's a big 42-inch tree in the backyard. We're going to keep that, and there's some brush running along the fence line.
Yeah.
We're going to leave the brush along the fence line as a buffer for noise, probably clean up a good portion of the backyard to establish a lawn, but try to keep, you know, say 10 feet, five, 10 feet, that brush along the fence, just to keep a buffer.
Okay, final question I have. This is just looking at pictures that are on the internet. That's where I got them. They appear to show that in the one of the rest of it, that's right there and has the tilted front door, or whatever you want to call it, had a smoke, or a fireplace. It looks like it had a swing set for some kids. It looks like it had a pit where people were sitting out in it. What are you doing with those people? And what are you doing with that?
Right. I think, I think they would handle it, knock on their door. I did drive by. I saw a trampoline sitting out there.
Yeah, that was there too, yes.
If it's movable, I think, you know, it's reasonable to ask them to move it. You know, if it's a permanent structure like a fire pit, again, I don't, I don't know the law in terms of, I mean, somebody's been using, developing a property that they didn't own. I would, I would imagine that would just be a neighborly discussion, just to say, hey, you know, you got this on your property. We're more than happy to help you move it, but if it needs to go. Because I think it ends up being a liability thing too in the future. And the fire pits are restricted by fire marshal, so he could also assist in handling it.
Fair enough. I just was, that was more of a curiosity thing. I noticed that it was there. What I said to myself is, somebody's going to have to deal with that.
People like to spread out.
Yeah. All right, I've addressed most of the questions that I've got. So as I see this, it's square foot?
Mm-hmm. Side setback.
Side yard setback. Enter.
There you go.
And the SEAKER?
SEAKER.
And.
Preliminary and final.
Subdivision.
Well, it wasn't advertised for final. The letter from Costage only asked for preliminary approval.
Oh, the applica, I apologize. The application had preliminary and final checked. That must have been an oversight error, and if it wasn't, it wasn't advertised for final?
No, I advertised it the way you had it written in your letter to me.
So you can't issue file, but could be processed if anything else, and come back to you later if the board is there?
I'd have to ask the question of our attorney on that one. What do we do when we take an action with something that's not listed?
For the record, I've had no phone calls for this, for or against. The sign's obviously been up for a couple weeks, so even the neighbors haven't called to say anything negative, so.
Well, are you, are you going to plan to start construction before the third Tuesday in October?
I think you are planning on closing on the property, which is the next step, I guess. It's up to the board. If it wasn't advertised and the board's not comfortable, I mean, I would say if, you know, if the public hearing was advertised and if the board was comfortable granting file, but if not.
We'll take your input, Don. Anything you've got there. I don't know where it's, it lands with my.
Well, it wasn't advertised, and the other thing, the application, all applications for site plan approval are to be submitted to the Monroe County Planning Department under General Municipal Law 2399. That doesn't happen. They may have 30 days to comment. I don't expect that they're going to have any comments on something like this, but I think you got to come back in 30 days.
I think, I mean, it might be in the heart of the board, but whatever comments the board makes tonight, I think will give them a good idea of whether it's going to be a go or not a go, to whether or not he can close on it, right? That's, you need to close on it? That's our understanding? Just so we don't pull that process off.
So the idea would be preliminary approvals?
Right. So then they can close on it, and then when they come back in October, we can be final, and then we'll have a committee remarks, which most likely, as Don said, there won't be any from the county, because.
Would the preliminary approvals be all inclusive?
What do you mean?
Would it would take in to count the side yard setbacks, the 8,000?
Well, those are, those are all separate issues. You're, he's asking for basically four things. He's asking for basically four things tonight. Preliminary site plan approval, two, two side setback variances.
Right.
Separate motions, separate votes, and then a, a variance for lot size.
Okay.
It's four things.
Could the board grant seeker as well?
Pardon me?
Could the board grant seeker along with preliminary approval?
The board has to.
Yeah.
To consider a seeker.
Yes, okay.
Before it can grant preliminary.
Correct, okay.
Or the, and the variance, before it can grant the variance.
Correct.
So you don't have to go through any of that for final, but.
So are we type one or type two?
Type two.
It's type, it's a type two.
Type two.
Type two.
So I have some, I have a couple of questions. Your confusion about, in your application, above, you requested area variance to allow both side setbacks of eight feet, or 10 feet is required?
Yeah, it was, our interpretation of the code was 10 feet, one abutting residential district. 20 feet one abutting a resident, residential district or use. We interpret it as, it's not, it's a commercial district, although they are residential uses. So we, we missed the or use part. If it weren't a residential use, it would be 10 feet. But it's, since it's abutting a residential use in a commercial district, it still requires a 20-foot side setback.
So would it be foolish for me to assume that this property has never been developed because of that variance?
It may have been developed a long time ago. I, I don't know the history of this property. I mean, I'm sure whatever was put in 100, 150 years ago, as well before any code, but I haven't, looking through the history, I haven't seen a structure there anytime in the recent past.
And my other question is, the, the, the two maple trees on the front part of the lot? One is in the middle, you're obviously taking that one down.
Yeah.
There's another maple tree that's on the, what I would consider the, the lot line?
Yeah.
Is that one going to be totally taken down? Or are they going to trim it to be able to do the construction?
We would hope that it could be pruned.
Pruned down.
And kept, but they really won't know until they get into it. I think it's important if you can't keep it, it's not a nice thing.
Yeah, it's a tree, it's a tree.
If it can be kept, but if, you know, if, if the root system gets damaged, I think they'd have to take it down. I think they'll make every effort to keep it.
Yeah, my, my preference would be to try to keep that tree. If not, it would be, my preference that other trees be planted on the front of that lot. If you look at the house that's east of that, or excuse me, west of that, the duplex there, and then there's another duplex after that, you'll see that they put a couple, put some new trees in there. And I don't know if the village did that, or if the owners did that, but that would be something that I would prefer to see.
Yeah, I think there's opportunity to plant a couple trees up in part of the house there.
Yeah, that'd be my preference.
We could actually make that part of the, the approval if we do that.
Yeah, you can, you can attach a condition. Like, they didn't submit a landscaping plan, so you can make a condition that they submit a landscaping plan.
The only thing I will say with that is, depending on the tree that's planted in size and stuff like that, all the sidewalks and driveways, you don't want to plant something too close, because then you're going to end up ruining it with the root system and everything else.
Yeah, I, I think if you take a look at the two duplexes that are west of it, they seem to have taken care of that situation, or taken that into consideration.
We can look, look into some trees that won't end up being 40-inch diameter over for something.
Yeah. And we can make that a recommendation of ours, to evaluate and, and submit the plan.
So do I have to submit that as a recommendation that they do that, and landscaping up the lot? And we have to vote on it, or?
Well, it would be, at the time you, you do a motion, it's a, it would be conditional approval.
Appreciate that.
It would be a grant preliminary approval on the following conditions, right? Which is your landscaping plan.
Let's make that a note for next, next meeting, for the final.
But it's going to be part, it's going to be part of the preliminary right now.
Right.
Okay, yeah, sorry.
Yes, and then they got 30 days to, well, assuming like on next, next month's calendar, whenever the submissions are required, you know, the landscaping plan by then.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other comments or thoughts from anyone on the board? Okay, so what we've got then is we have the 8,000 square foot area variance. Then we have the east side yard and the west side yard, and the recommendation for a, I don't know what you want to call it, landscaping plan. Yeah, no, no, we'll leave that, but that would be, that would be where we're going to go. That's what I wanted to do just before we gave him the opportunity. And then we had, anything else? Okay. And the seeker review, did you do it?
They submitted a short form environmental assessment form. My only question at the very end, at number 20, you checked yes that the site of the proposed action has been the subject of remediation for hazardous waste.
It's an automatic clicking. It's not the site, it's a radius of the site. It's, it's a, New York State, it's a basically GIS. So that question 20 was not answered yes by us, it was answered yes by New York State, because the site is within, I think, 500 feet of another location that had previously had remediation. It automatically clicks yes. This property has never had remediation, it's just within a vicinity.
I'm curious.
It was most likely that gas station that used to be right at the corner. It's literally right there diagonal, which is now the transmission shop or something.
Brake shop.
The line, the bridge. Brake shop, I don't remember. I'm assuming it's that.
There was a machine shop there.
In my mind, it would only go into the play here if there were underground tanks that were leaking their gasoline, or that flowing lipo, quite frankly, for that matter. But there had to have been something that leaked there, and, I'm curious.
Yeah.
That, because I also would have seen remediation moves in that particular site if they were trying to do that, and I haven't seen that.
Yeah, no, it would have been, definitely before my time.
Okay, probably mine.
There was a machine shop there that burnt down on the corner of.
Is that what it was?
Yes. And where the new housing development is, the big development there, that was originally a casket factory.
In any case, the state has checked that or gone through a system to make sure that you address it?
Yeah.
It's not your responsibility, but it's making sure that you know it's there if you're going to do anything.
Correct, yeah. It's just, it's a check, it's within a certain distance. There's been no indicators that this property has had any chemical spills or any need for any remediation.
Or anything for any of the other residents there.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay, fair enough. Got a question.
The building's full basements or is it level grade?
I think crawl space.
Yeah, there's some.
Level grade, yeah.
Crawl space.
No basement.
So any remediation probably isn't getting too detailed.
Well put, good, good point. Any other comments or questions from anybody on the, on the board? Any other comments or questions you have for us?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay, so we know what we're having here and what we need to do. What we need to do at this point is close our portion, open it up to anybody from the general public who wanted to speak for or against this, and I'll do the same thing. Just tell us who you are when you come up, and where you reside, and tell us what your thoughts are.
Richard Wilder, 20 Elm Street. I can speak neither for nor against the project. It is a very, my only comment is the tightness of the project with the setbacks being so limited, I think it's a little tight. But it does seem to fit the neighborhood, and from the picture we show, it's going to be the classiest-looking piece in that part of the neighborhood. So thank you.
Well, good, well done, and thank you very much, I appreciate that. Anyone else with any comments or against? Okay, we'll close that portion. So, all right, so what we have before this board right now is preliminary approval of the items we discussed earlier. If anyone's got a motion for that, I'll, I'll go over them again. It's the, moving to the 8,000 square feet, that's 500, or 407, I got. Thank you, 407.
507.
507, thank you. An eight-yard. Okay. An eight-yard setback on each side, so that would be a 12-yard setback?
12-foot.
Or a 12-foot setback, excuse me?
It's an eight-foot setback.
Eight-foot.
It's a 12-foot variance.
12-foot, 12, 12-foot variance. All right, thank you, I appreciate that. And then a.
My, my suggestion is take them one at a time.
Yes.
Just, like, do the square foot one first, and then move on, so we don't, okay? So you're going to have four separate motions.
I'm ready.
Go forward.
Okay, I would like to make a motion for a type-two action on the seeker with no significant environmental impact.
I'll second that. We've got that seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Thank you for the type-two.
Okay, I would like to make a motion for a positive recommendation for an eight-foot side setback on both sides of the property to allow relief from the 20-foot side setback requirement on both sides of the existing lot. The variance request therefore is 12-foot relief.
Okay, and you want to do that, you want to do two there, one for each side?
Both sides.
One for east and one for west, so that's two.
I'll second it.
We have that seconded?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None, good job. And then we have.
Ready?
Yep.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion for a positive recommendation for a lot size variance of 500, or, uh, positive recommendation for lot size relief from the 8,000 square foot requirement. Variance request a 507 square foot relief.
Okay, so we've got a motion on the table to provide a relief to that.
I'll second it.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Very good. That's three so far. And we have a type-two.
All right.
We did that.
A full monkey here. I would like to make a motion for preliminary site plan approval contingent upon submission of final site plan, landscaping plans.
And the site plan approval includes the landscaping plan?
Well, conditioned upon preliminary, the preliminary approval is conditioned upon submission of a landscaping plan along with.
Final.
Area application for final site plan approval.
And will the tree, trying their best to save that tree, be included in the landscape plan?
Yeah.
Yes, if possible.
If possible, right. All right, seconded?
Aye.
Do we have it seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None, very poor. Thank you, you're all set. Work with her 30 days, get back in here for October.
Yes, sir.
Because putting it off to November is going to put you into Thanksgiving week, and I don't think you want to do that.
I'll get Aaron what he needs before the end of the week.
Perfect. All right. All right, so final item here for us, before we do anything, we've, we've done all this. There is something on our plates already in space for October. Looks like there's going to be at least two things now, but there's at least one thing.
Yeah, well, I'm sure, definitely one thing now, because at least one, possibly two others as well.
So we have a meeting.
So we have a meeting for October, it's going to be here, third Tuesday of October. Very good. All right.
What's that date?
That's the 17th, or the.
17th.
I believe it is the 17th.
October 17th.
There we go.
We'll go back quicker, we don't even know.
Aaron, so October 17th is actually 28 days from today, if you've got to give the county 30 days.
Yeah, something like this, they do normally get back to me a lot quicker, because I'll have to submit it first thing tomorrow morning. And then normally, this doesn't affect them October, so pine roads and all that, so, perfect, they're normally quick, especially because the meeting date will be on there, so we'll see that.
Okay, so we've got a 7:00 PM meeting on October 17th coming up. We've at least got a couple of things on that item. All right, motion to, to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Very good, thank you, we're all adjourned.
So one of them's the next, next month, they're going to be, connect the bank. They want to go for.
What?
To connect the bank down there.
Oh.
They're modeling.
Yeah.
They're going to be going for new site plan, because they want to modify what they have there already. I don't know if it's going to be later, but the big tall curves that they have?
Yeah.
That everybody falls over, trips over, and they want to get rid of those. We talked about putting the alleisters up, but that's more atrocious, I think that would look terrible. They're going to move the dumpster and those here, and they have some, with the remodeling, they had some steel beams that they, they've taken the concrete around, out and around it, I don't know if they brought it, so. Oh, okay. So, yeah, so that's going to be coming forward, and then.
What's the code say on the curves?
It's different.
Because that's not on the road, that's actually inside the market.
Yeah, it's part of the property, and a lot of the new stuff. There's a lot of the new stuff, there's not a lot of curves around, so.
Okay.
So, yeah, just, I was just giving you guys a heads up at one time next month, I appreciate it, thank you.